Whoa, baby. Hi, folks. We have one more member that should be here in a couple of minutes. We're just gonna give him a couple more minutes. Twenty-three. If you arrive, sort of pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under the visual of liberty and justice for all.
Two hundred minutes. We will do the roll call now. Mr. Anthony Giacobi.
Present.
Mr. James Bono is here. Mr. Joseph Rubino.
Present.
And Michael Fortuno.
Present.
Mr. Phil Nemisak is probably on the way up the hill right now. And we'll, uh, we will start without him. And we'll call his attendance when he, when he arrives. So. We will still, uh, start with the application, the first application this evening. Uh, so let me just run through this really quickly. We have seven applications this evening. The first one is Wilmon Pharmacy. The second is Crema Cafe. The third is Total Form Fitness. The fourth is Lake Shore Drive, twenty-sixth Lake Shore Drive. The next is sixty-five Hickory Hill Road. The sixth is four sixty-five White Plains Road, Gian Non Restaurant. And the last one is Arch Care at two sixty-five White Plains Road. Uh, so the first application is twenty-three dash twenty-one Wilmon Pharmacy. And while you're getting up there, Mr. Yanecido, we will take Mr. Phil Nemisak's attendance.
Finally present. Yeah.
Good to see you, Phil.
Should we approve the minutes?
Well, I guess we could, huh?
Yeah. So we don't forget.
Sure. Which ones can we approve here? Yeah, cool. John, could you just hang a minute? We're just gonna approve some minutes here. So the first one is June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three. That's me, you, Phil, and Anthony. I make a motion to approve the minutes of June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
Subject to the relatively few minor revisions that I've circulated. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think you guys can do twenty-sixth.
All of us.
Mr. Phil, Anthony, Joseph, and Michael. So when do you guys make a motion?
Uh, make a motion, is it September twenty-sixth?
Uh, October twenty-sixth.
October twenty-sixth, okay. Uh, yeah. I make a motion to approve the Planning Board minutes of the October twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three Planning Board meeting, subject to the revisions that I've circulated.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. Thank you. You're up.
Okay. Good evening. My name is John Yanecido. I'm an architect and I'm representing Wilmon Pharmacy, the owners of the subject property. Uh, we are proposing, uh, the construction of a one-story addition at the rear of the existing one-story structure located at, uh, one ninety-nine Brook Street. Uh, the proposed addition, uh, will be constructed in a landlocked rear yard, uh, which is currently at a lower elevation than the neighboring properties and is separated from the neighboring properties with retaining walls on the side, uh, property line and the rear property line. I'm gonna come up there and, uh, just review the drawings. Yeah, so here on, on this page, we have the site plan showing the, uh, the addition at the rear, highlighted in yellow here. And basically, it's just an extension of the existing building mass into the rear yard. It's about a twenty-foot, uh, extension into the rear yard. Uh, the floor plans. Uh, at the lower floor, the, uh, the upper floor will be, uh, supported by columns and it'll be open, uh, underneath. And then at the top floor, it's an expansion, uh, of the pharmacy space to include some additional office spaces for the pharmacy. Uh, here are the elevations. Uh, so at, uh, the front elevation, there's no proposed changes to the front elevation at all. Uh, everything's at the rear, uh, at the right side elevation. Here's the addition at the rear. Only the upper portion of the addition will be, uh, visible from grade on this side. And then here is the addition, um, on the left side, where both the lower and the upper level, uh, will be visible from grade with the lower level open. Uh, and at the rear, there's a couple of windows, a door, and a staircase going down to, uh, the rear yard. Uh, as far as the, uh, the, uh, materials, um, the wall surfaces will be, uh, a brick to match existing, painted brick to match existing colors of the, the rest of the building. Uh, the door and windows at the rear will be vinyl clad in a white finish to match existing. The columns on the lower floor will be metal painted to match the brick color. And the staircase, uh, at the rear will be, uh, metal in a black finish. So the existing property is currently, I'm gonna wait this. The existing property is currently, uh, non-conforming. And variances were granted by the zoning board on, uh, October tenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, for an increase to all the existing non-conforming conditions. It's non-conforming, uh, six different points and all six, all six points needed, uh, variance for this addition. Uh, the application was also presented to the Architectural Review Board on November second, two thousand twenty-three, uh, and it was approved as submitted with no additional comments. Thank you for your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
It looks pretty straightforward to me. And I don't have any questions.
Yeah, what, what is the purpose of the, uh, the addition?
Well, they just, they need some additional office space because, uh, ever since COVID, they've been doing, uh, vaccines within the pharmacy. So they gave up their existing office space that they had set up from years ago, uh, as little exam rooms for, uh, for vaccines, for both the flu and COVID and whatever vaccine, other vaccines that people need.
Yep, these are high times for vaccinations.
Yeah. Keep pumping them into us, that's it.
Okay. Uh, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you.
Great, so let's just do the public hearing. Make a motion to open the public hearing. Application twenty-three, twenty-one, Wilmon Pharmacy.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to close the public hearing on the same application, twenty-three dash twenty-one, Wilmon Pharmacy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're matching the existing, um, on the addition, the existing facade on the side. Probably said that already.
The brickwork?
Yeah.
Yeah, everything is gonna match existing. So I have some photos of.
It's brickwork that's painted, right?
Yeah, it's like, uh, an off-white, uh, painted brick. And it'll just be an extension of the existing. So just extend it towards the back. Everything will be the same on the sides and the rear.
Okay.
Good.
That's good. So I make a motion to approve this application, twenty-three, twenty-one, Wilmon Pharmacy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You done for the day, John? Or do you have any other applications before us? Or?
Two more.
Two more.
Okay. This is the next one. The next one is, uh, twenty-three, thirty-four, Crema Cafe, four-seven-zero, White Plains Road.
Okay, good evening again. My name is John Yanecido. I'm an architect and I'm representing, uh, Crema Cafe, the, uh, the proposed tenant at, uh, four-seventy White Plains Road. Uh, and the, uh, proposed tenant space is highlighted there on the, on the survey in, uh, in yellow. Um, I also have the owners of Crema Cafe with me this evening. Um, so the proposed scope of work here will include a change of use from a dry cleaners to a coffee shop cafe. Uh, and we are requesting a special permit uh, for the proposed type-one food service establishment. Uh, all the proposed work is internal and there is no proposed change to the exterior of the building. Uh, the new space will have a service counter and a few tables, but most of the food will be carryout. Uh, we're also requesting a referral to the zoning board for one area variance. Uh, the proposed change in use will create an increase, uh, to the existing non-conforming parking. Uh, the existing parking is currently non-conforming with a total of fifty-six spaces required and eleven provided. Uh, the proposed change in use will increase the parking requirement by two parking spaces uh, to a total requirement of fifty-eight spaces. Uh, so we have eleven spaces on the site and there, there is, uh, plenty of metered space available across the street in the, uh, public parking lot. Uh, the proposed use will comply with all standard and individual requirements for the type-one food service establishment. And I put that in my cover letter, explaining each, each point. Uh, the subject space, uh, was previously occupied by a deli about ten to fifteen years ago. Uh, and we will be utilizing the existing, um, opening in the roof for the new hood. Uh, since the property is adjacent to a residential zone, we are also proposing to install an odor abatement system within the hood system to neutralize the odors and the smoke that will be released from the exhaust system. Uh, the existing rooftop HVAC equipment will remain unchanged. The waste and recyclables are currently stored in receptacles on the side yard of the building and that will remain unchanged. Uh, the waste and recyclables are picked up by a private waste management company twice a week and that could be increased if necessary. Uh, deliveries are currently made, uh, through the parking lot and, and through the side of the, of the building. Uh, all, all the, uh, spaces have, uh, entrances on the side entrances. Um, and that will remain unchanged. And the hours of operation for the, uh, for the cafe will be Monday through Sunday, seven AM to three PM. Uh, they will also, uh, be open for a couple of hours on Friday and Saturdays in the early evenings or in the evenings, uh, between six PM and nine PM, uh, for a limited menu, uh, of just desserts, coffee, and gelato.
So that wouldn't involve cooking?
Yeah, very little cooking in the evenings, right? Just desserts and gelato and coffee. So most of the cooking will be in, in the morning, at time. Uh, and that's it. Basically, uh, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer it.
John, could you, the, the variances that you will be seeking, uh, from the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, the parking, because you have an increased need for, uh, two additional spaces or something?
So the dry cleaners, the, the way that the calculation works in the town for the dry cleaners, you, you basically do the area where the, where the public, the customers stand. Uh, that area plus the number of employees. So it's a very small area in this cleaners where the public can stand. So it's like one, one space for that and they have two employees. So it's a total of three parking spaces. The, um, the restaurant is based on a gross floor area, which is one parking space for a hundred and fifty square feet and that comes out to five parking spaces. So it's an increase of two parking spaces. And the, the entire building is non-conforming. Over the years, we, we found some records of, of variances for the parking and some not. So, uh, we're, we're gonna try to clean it all up with this application, basically.
But I think, I, I do remember when that, that building was originally built and I, I certainly know that the parking, uh, in, you know, that area just west of the library, uh, going all the way down to White Plains Road was not nearly in as good a shape as it is now. Uh, so, uh, I, I do believe that there's, you know, it, uh, there would still be a need for a variance, but, uh, I think there is ample parking. Um, so in addition to that variance, what, what?
Just that one variance.
Just that one. Just that one.
Um, some of the special permit requirements, uh, we go through all the time, but as far as, um, as far as garbage, waste, and all that, that really isn't changing from the establishment.
Yeah, so they, they have receptacles at the side, at the, in the side yard. Currently for each, each, uh, each store, right here, these, these little squares here, all, all.
Okay.
Are, are receptacles. So the, the garbage truck pulls in here and, and picks up the garbage.
And that remains unchanged.
And the deliveries are made the same way. The trucks pull into the driveway and they make deliveries.
Yep.
What is the total seating inside of?
Uh, so, so the, the proposed seating, we're, we're gonna have a, uh, a service counter with no seats around the service counter and then we have, uh, five tables of two. So about ten people.
I'm good. Let's, any more questions, guys?
No.
So I make a motion, let's do the public hearing. Cause we'll do the public hearing, we'll leave it open and then we'll refer you to zoning board. Uh, I make a motion to open the public hearing on application twenty-three, thirty-four, Crema Cafe, four-seventy White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cool. We'll just leave that open.
Uh-huh.
Right, you're going to zoning and then you're coming back.
Yeah, and then we'll come back to planning for a final review.
Okay. So then, uh, if there's no other questions, I make a motion to forward this application, twenty-three, thirty-four, Crema Cafe, four-seventy White Plains Road, to Zoning Board of Appeals for the appeals, for the consideration of necessary variances for the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You're good to go? All right. Thank you.
Uh, one more.
Okay. It's like a marathon.
Three in a row.
Three in a row. Jeez.
So next one.
Okay, good evening again. My name is John Yanecido. I'm an architect and I'm, uh.
Can I just announce it? Just so everyone knows. The next application is twenty-three dash thirty-five, Total Form Fitness, ninety-five Montgomery.
Okay.
And this is John Yanecido. He's an architect.
Architect. I'm representing, uh, Total Form Fitness, uh, the proposed first-floor tenant at ninety-five Montgomery Avenue. And, and that tenant space is also highlighted on the site plan, uh, in yellow. Uh, the proposed scope of work here will include, uh, a change of use from an office space to a personal fitness center. Uh, and we are requesting a special permit for an indoor recreation and family entertainment facility. A gym, I guess. Um, all the proposed work is internal. There is no proposed changes to the exterior of the existing structure. Uh, we are also requesting a referral to the zoning board uh, for one area variance and two variances to the in, individual requirements of the special permit. Uh, the proposed change in use will create an increase to the existing, uh, non-conforming parking. Uh, the existing parking is currently non-conforming with forty-six spaces required and ten provided. Uh, the proposed change in use will increase the parking by twenty-six spaces. A total requirement, uh, increase in the total requirement to seventy-two spaces and ten provided. Uh, the ten spaces are provided on-site. There's also twelve permit spaces right along the front of the building. Uh, those permit spaces are paid for by the building owner and are provided for the tenants of his building. Uh, there's also, um, additional metered spaces uh, along Montgomery Avenue across the street. Uh, also, the calculations that, that were done for the, for the parking here is, is, uh, one parking space for every fifty square feet of the, of the personal training space. This personal training space is not your conventional gym where you're just gonna have lines of, of gym equipment for, for people to use. It's more of a personal, one-on-one, uh, training with the, with the trainer. Um, so, um, at max, you're gonna get ten, ten people there uh, at a time, uh, within the space. Uh, the proposed use will comply with all the standard and individual requirements for the indoor recreation and family entertainment facility, except for two items. Uh, and variances will be required for a use setback uh, and for the hours of operation. So the required setbacks for an indoor recreation and family entertainment facilities are a hundred feet from each property line. This site, um, is a hundred feet wide and a hundred feet deep. So the, the, it will not comply or it can't comply with a hundred-foot setback to the building cause the building would have to be on another site. Uh, the other variance to the, um, to, for the use is the required hours of operation. So the required hours of operation for the indoor recreation and family entertainment facility are nine AM to ten PM on, on Sundays through Thursday and nine AM to eleven PM Friday and Saturdays. The proposed hours of operation for the, uh, for the gym will be six AM to six PM Monday through Saturday and closed on Sundays. So we're actually gonna open a little bit earlier than the required hours and close a little bit earlier and then not open at all on Sundays. Thank you.
The number of hours is approximately the same or possibly even less if you consider you're not open on Sunday.
Yeah, it might be like one hour, cause it's nine, nine to ten.
Yeah.
And this is six.
Six, so it's one hour less, but it just shifted three hours earlier.
Earlier, yes.
Okay. Which probably will help alleviate something of a traffic problem or a parking problem. Yeah. Especially at six in the morning.
Six in the morning, well.
Maybe less so at eight-thirty.
Yeah, and that, that Montgomery, the, the parking on Montgomery Avenue is usually pretty plentiful. I mean, it's, there's, there's a lot of, you know, it's not always crowded there. Um, so I think, I think we'll be okay. We'll, we'll have to see what, what the zoning board says.
Yeah, well, I, I guess you sit on this board long enough and you, you remember Wooden Fire, uh, before that was Metzaluna and, uh, we had, uh, you know, the, the proposed age-restricted, uh, housing that, that never went forward up there. And, and I do recall every application, I think, that we have ever had off of Brook Street has included, uh, uh, local residents, um, complaining about the difficulty of getting parking. And I, I rather suspect that has not gotten better. It's probably gotten worse. But that's more an issue, I believe, for the zoning board of appeals at this point than this board. And as you said, at least as, as this facility, um, is proposed for the present, uh, it, it should not have the same impact on parking because it should have fewer people, uh, attending at any given moment than might, uh, a, a, a more general, uh, standardized gym.
Yeah, and then they could, they could place a condition on it that if it ever changes to a gym that was more conventional with a lot of equipment, they would have to go back in front of the board.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the, uh, the owners here would be, would be happy to do that.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
So it's really personal and maybe group lessons?
Yeah, they've been.
Classes and whatnot, which should be fine.
Right. It's more like a CrossFit-type gym. Uh, and, and if there's a trainer that he might, he might be doing, training two or three, uh, people at a time, bouncing around from one to the other.
If they do have anything in the mornings, the noise, the music will be indoors during those sessions, so it shouldn't impact that.
Yeah.
You said seven, right? You said the hours start at seven?
Six.
Uh, six AM.
Six, okay. Okay.
Is that early enough for you, Jim? I know you're an early bird.
I'm leaving out of the gym by six.
Yeah, there you go.
On the way to work.
Mm-hmm. Gave you that opportunity to boast.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. It's my Christmas gift to you.
You knew I was gonna take the bait. Okay, cool. So, uh, let's do the public hearing. Open it up. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this application, twenty-three, thirty-five, Total Form Fitness, ninety-five Montgomery.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you want a comment? Please come up. Uh, yeah, would you come up to the mic, state your name, address, and then make your comment? Appreciate it.
Or comments, if you have more than one.
Evening, gentlemen. My name is Anthony Moreno. I am, um, the owner of Boutique Personal Training right on ninety-one Montgomery Avenue. So that would be directly next, this is my partner, Tanisha. She's very pregnant, so, um, uh, this proposed, um, change would be very detrimental to me or my business. What this gentleman is describing is exactly the business that I currently have there, which is a small boutique personal training area where we do no more than one-on-ones or small group training. Uh, unfortunately, I have looked into Total Form Fitness and it is a bigger, uh, more complex business model than that. Um, and the parking situation on Montgomery has not improved by any standards. Uh, if, if anything, it has got worse. Um, I would oppose to this because, A, it's directly next to my business, literally door-to-door. B, it's, um, going to be detrimental to the parking situation and to the immediate area, in my opinion, of course. That's, that's all, gents.
Okay.
Okay. I do, I do understand, though, that, uh, I mean, maybe there is a need for more of your, maybe this, maybe this will become the hub of, uh, personal training fitness and, and you'll see more business. Uh, I, I happen to be a lawyer and they, they always say the worst thing is to be the only lawyer in town. Business only takes off when there are two lawyers in town. Um, I, I don't know if this, that this would be a good analog, but, uh, one thing that I don't think this board is charged with is making decisions as to, you know, what, what type of business we already have enough of and what, what we don't need more of. Um, I think the public usually finds a way of expressing, um, you know, who, who, who it likes, uh, who it wants to do business with. Um, and, you know, again, the hope would be if this application does go forward that, you know, there's more than enough business for, for both of you. But the other, um, concerns that you raised about parking, um, I, I think is probably more appropriately raised, assuming this board advances the application to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It would, I, I think that is the board that is probably going to address more thoroughly, um, the, the request for a variance and how that, um, how, how the current situation in, off of Brook Street, on Montgomery and, and in the, uh, the immediate surrounding areas, whether that can support, um, a facility of this nature. You're already there. So you're not, you know, your, your business isn't jeopardized by that. So that, that, those are my suggestions. Okay? But thank you for your comments.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more comments from the public nor the board. I am going to make a motion to forward this application. Comment?
Can I just ask, what's the, less than a hundred feet? What, any?
It's kinda archaic.
Okay.
Can you try and explain it?
Oh, for the, the use setback?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's a, there's something as, one of the, uh, requirements for, individual requirements for the, uh, what is it? The family, uh, hold on, I gotta get the right language here. For the, uh, recreation and family entertainment facility is that, uh, any building on a site that, that has that particular type of use needs to have a minimum of a hundred-foot setback from the property line to the, to the structure. Um, so this, this building, uh, exists on a, a lot that's only a hundred by a hundred. So, uh.
So you gotta buy the lot in back of it.
You gotta buy a couple of lots, yeah, in order to make that.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I, I'm sorry. So I guess what I was asking was, when they say less than a hundred, is there any, any proposed amount of feet away that it would be?
Or what it is? So it's whatever's existing. So currently, so currently, the, the existing building is zero on this side. It's right up against the property line. At the rear, it's thirty feet, and on this side, it's thirteen feet. And this, in the front, it's ten feet. So it would require variances on all, all four sides.
On all four, okay.
For that, for that particular. But I don't think they call that an area variance because it's, it's basically a, a variance for this use. It's not really for, for the building footprint as far as zoning. It could, this building actually, well, it doesn't comply because this is non-compliant. That, that zero setback is non-compliant for today's codes, but when it was built, maybe it was compliant.
Do, do you know, John, whether this is for its current or the previous use? I don't know if it's current as an office. Were, I, I would imagine different setback rules apply there, but what, do you know whether this is non-compliant even for an office in its current use or?
So as far as, as far as the building itself, so if we look at the required, the front yard is required is ten feet, and the existing is ten feet. The rear yard is actually required forty feet, and the existing is thirty, so it's not compliant in the rear yard. The, the first side yard here required is ten feet, and it's, existing is thirteen, so it does comply there. And then the second side yard is ten feet, it's actually zero. So.
Okay, so it's.
It doesn't comply. So it actually doesn't comply on one side yard and the rear, even as an office. But the office doesn't require a special, special permit, so it doesn't have to meet these special requirements for that use.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, the intent of the, the statement is to get the establishments away from property line. And where that could be accomplished in any town, I guess it's a good thing to have, but on most of the lots here in town, just can't be complied with.
Yeah, most, most wouldn't comply with that one particular requirement.
We've seen that before.
I mean, and I can understand that if it was like an entertainment, like an amusement park.
If it were a bigger lot, sure.
But for, for an indoor space like this, for a gym, it doesn't really make much sense, that, that, that requirement.
Okay, so then, let's keep going. So I make a motion to forward application 2335 Total Form Fitness, 95 Montgomery, to the zoning Board of Appeals for consideration of the necessary variances for this application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Merry Christmas, everyone, and happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Yes, Merry Christmas. Great seeing you.
Tonight's the first night of Hanukkah. Happy Hanukkah.
See you and your family.
Happy New Year. That's coming, and, okay.
Same here.
Yeah.
Sure you don't have one more.
Okay, next, next application is 2331 26 Lake Shore Drive.
Good evening. My name is Arnold Weil. I'm the architect for 26 Lake Shore Drive. And we are proposing to do some interior changes and windows and door changes to the house. There's no change at all to the physical size of the house. There is also a deck in the back, an existing deck, which we're proposing to replace.
Can you just point it out on the drawing, what it is you intend?
Oh, yeah, bring the microphone with you. Yep.
Of course. So this part of the house, which is the kitchen, miscellaneous rooms and an entrance, we're proposing to make the entrance larger. We're moving a bathroom from its existing location to a new location. We're moving a few of the walls, creating an office and a great room in the back. And we're changing some of the windows and doors in the front and also in the back. And there's an existing deck which we're replacing.
So are you replacing windows and doors in the front in kind?
Sorry?
Are you replacing the windows and doors in the front that you just mentioned in kind, same size, shape, everything is the same?
Everything is going to match. And we're putting on new siding, which was approved by the Architectural Review Board a couple of weeks ago. And that'll be throughout the entire house.
So there's really no physical change to the elevation other than the siding that's changing?
Yes, they're in, the, the, we're not changing anything in terms of the physical size of the house at all.
And the only changes to the exterior of the house, other than new siding and the like, the only changes are to the decking in the, in the back, right?
We're not changing anything as far as the size is concerned.
Yes.
Just some windows and doors.
But the deck as well in the back, yeah, yes.
Yes, the deck is in the back of the, there's an existing deck, and we're replacing it with a little bit larger deck in exactly the same place.
Okay. Lucas, can I ask you, why is this before us? What, yeah.
Well, because it involves more than thirty percent of the front of the house is being changed.
Oh, just by, by the, changing the siding?
Is the, did you say the entrance?
No, when you do, when you do a construction, like an alteration to a house.
Yeah.
If you look at the front of the house, and you can calculate more than thirty percent of the front of the, the front of the building that you view from the street, if more than thirty percent is being changed by the alteration, it has to appear before the ARB and plenty of.
Yeah, but I, I thought this is, that there isn't really an alteration. They're just, we're just doing a change in the, in the siding.
No, no, no. When you look at the, the way that the house is being reconfigured, it's, it's about thirty percent. Yeah, it's, it's, it just barely makes it.
Okay, okay, that's fine.
Did you say the entrance is being adjusted, or from the face of the house, it's still the same? You said, you said the entrance?
Everything is exactly in the same place. We're just changing the windows and doors.
Got it. So when you say that the entrance area was getting larger, it was just within the house that you were reconfiguring? Where you said the bathroom is getting moved, it's not like you're making an extension, it's just within?
No, the, there are, everything's in the same place.
Okay.
The interior volume of the house is not changing at all.
Is this an instance, Lucas, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to freeze you out, because this is such, there's a lot of window on this, that, that the changing of the windows constitutes that thirty percent possibly?
Right, it is part of that, but if you look at the front of the, the front of the plans, I mean, you see that, like, right, the windows are being changed.
Yep.
If you, if you just look at the front, it's about a third of the house is being changed, you know. So it's, the, the, let's see, remove existing windows, add the new windows. It, it basically comes out to about that.
Okay.
But then also, the whole house is being, if, if I'm correct, right, the whole house is being reclad with new siding, right?
Yes.
So there's also that element to it.
But I thought siding, you could put new siding.
No, 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 that wouldn't normally be.
Yeah, that's, so it's, it's gotta be the windows, then?
Right, right. So windows in the, the floor.
And the door, and whatever. Okay, correct.
But, but because it's here, the ARB evaluated the siding, and they, they had specific comments about the siding.
Okay.
Right, we agreed on the, on the siding, yeah.
Okay, so it, it's, it's a, what you call it?
Clapard.
Horizontal.
Clapard.
Okay. She said between five and seven inches wide.
Exactly.
Okay.
Can you show, do you have the front elevation to show those windows on there?
I don't have it here. He's got it there.
Yeah, I have the.
And Mr. Weil, could you, I, I know we just mentioned the Architectural Review Board, the very hardworking ARB. Can you, can you tell us with respect to the recommendation that they made about the siding? And, and it appears that you adopted their recommendation? Is that true?
Yes, of course.
Okay.
We were proposing to use shingles, which would be horizontal lines, but then you'd see the vertical lines, each individual shingle. And we agreed that it would be clappard, which is just straight across. No problem at all.
Got it. Okay. Did the ARB have any other recommendations?
That was the only one.
The only one. Okay, perfect.
Did you bring the samples?
I did bring samples to the Architectural Review Board, yes.
Okay. Yeah, they'd asked that you bring them here.
Oh, you gave the ARB the samples?
Sorry.
You gave the ARB the samples?
I didn't give it to them. I just showed it to them.
Oh, but you did not bring them with you tonight. You did not bring them with you tonight, here. You don't have them with you now, do you?
I don't have them with me at this, no.
The ARB asked for samples and photos of what the house would look like.
To show us?
Yeah, that was in my notes, yeah.
Yeah, we did submit photographs. We submitted those to the Architectural Review Board.
What color is it? What color is the siding?
It's white. Slightly off-white. White.
Can we just let it go? It's Christmas.
That's at your discretion? I mean, we have, we have the, when the, when the plans come before the building inspector, I mean, he can check them against what the ARB said.
Yeah.
But it's, it's your decision.
All right, we would have liked to see it, but we're not gonna give you any more hard time. Nice you to come. We're just gonna let this roll forward. So you can leave, we can, and we can move on. So then, I am going to open the public hearing, is that what I'm doing?
Yes.
So I make a motion to open the public hearing on application 2331 26 Lake Shore Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't go anywhere. Okay. Close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing on the same application, 2331 26 Lake Shore Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And approve the application, 26 Lake Shore Drive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Weil.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Merry Christmas, happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, happy New Year. I might be missing some, but happy everything.
Next application is 2320 65 Hickory, Hickory Hill Road.
Good evening. I'm Stephanie Malinsky. I'm the architect for 65 Hickory Hill Road. We're proposing an addition at the front of the house, and my clients wanted a contemporary look, so I'm adding some new roof lines with a standing seam metal roof in black. The whole house will be reclad in stucco. And then we have some wood-like accents. I have a sample here. So the off-white color is the stucco color. The black represents the, the standing seam metal roof. And then the trespa, it's a, it's a laminate hardwood that will have some accents on. The windows will be black. I can walk you through the plans. So the additions here at the front of the house, we've got a large great room, and then a master suite. It's a split level, a master suite here. So this is the addition, and the addition on this side. So carrying the stucco around the entire house, the entire existing house, and then at the front of the house, some accents of that wood. The Architectural Review Board had asked about snow guards, so I have some information on there for the snow guards for the standing seam metal roof. Let's see, they also asked about the lighting, so I, I have some lighting. It's not on this rendering, but it's on either side of the garage. Oh, here, I forgot to put it in the elevation. Oh, they also had some comments about the, the walkway. So since then, I made the walkway here, but then we have a few steps down to the driveway, and then the walkway continues for accessibility.
So is the, the illustration here, the, before or after you made the revisions?
This is the after.
This is the after, okay.
So you can see on the site.
Yeah, because I'm seeing the steps down.
Yeah.
Okay. So the, the version that you showed, the ARB did not have those steps?
Correct, yeah. It was just a sloped sidewalk all the way down, and they, they were just concerned about that. So, you know, I broke it up with that flat landing, and then the steps down, and then the walkway continues.
Yep. Because I think they were concerned about ice and et cetera, so.
We are calling out for it to be a heated sidewalk, so that they, they don't have to worry about the ice and snow.
So do you have a streetscape or the adjacent buildings? I mean, I have the pictures of them, but do you have something illustrating how this looks next to the 63 and 60?
I don't have an elevation. Yeah, I just have the, the existing photos.
Yeah, but I can't piece it together in my head. You don't have anything prepared, or do you?
I don't have an elevation of that. I could show you this.
You can look on Google Maps.
I know, but we'd like to see it here.
Yes.
It's on a cul-de-sac. You can kind of see the, the house right here next to it, but then it turns around.
Yeah, the one to the left is this one, right? It's obviously the, the bigger one.
Yes.
Do they, did you match the height, the max eve height?
So this is lower than the surrounding houses because it is a split level, and we're, we're not going any higher than the existing.
Yeah, I know the, the ARB had some concern about the, this is a modern house. It's a very, it's a different, there's nothing else in the streetscape that looks like this. Is that's a fair characterization? Is that fair?
That's a fair characterization, yeah. My clients wanted a contemporary look, so, you know, that's where it came from.
Yeah, it, you know, whether, you know, it's, it's my preference, or, or Anthony's preference, or anyone's, I, I think it looks neat. You know, it, it, it is a little bit different, but, you know, people have different tastes. I can respect that. So yeah, that, to answer one of your concerns, Mr. Chairman, it, it is definitely a different type of construction, yeah.
Okay. Let's keep moving if there's no more comments. And I'm gonna make a motion to open the public hearing on the application, 2320 65 Hickory Hill.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looks like there's no comments, so I make a motion to close the public hearing on the same application, 2320 65 Hickory Hill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think we're good to go.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So guys, if you don't have anything else, I make a motion to approve.
Yeah, are, are you removing the barberry shrubs from the landscaping?
Yes.
Okay. Very good.
We have to approve this. So, is there a site plan?
Yes.
Thank you. So as far as stuff like impervious surface and all that kind of thing, are we increasing, decreasing?
Or staying the same?
We're increasing, so I've added some dry wells for that, but we're not over the allowable. We did have to receive a variance just for a front yard setback because they are on a cul-de-sac. The, the property lines, you know, caused this corner to have to, it was over the front yard setback.
And we always ask where the condensers are?
So we're not adding any.
Are they going where they existing is?
Yeah, we're not adding any, but they're currently over here.
Okay.
Good.
You said everything, all the samples were approved by Architectural Review Board already?
I'm sorry, what?
You said all of the samples were already reviewed and approved by the Architectural Review Board?
Yes, um, I didn't have the snow guard, which I have information on there, in there on. But they, they reviewed, reviewed that, as well as the colors.
Okay.
I saw that, the snow guard. What's snow guard?
Uh, just to prevent, you know, snow from coming down the roof, so.
On the standing seam?
Yes, yes, at the edge of it.
Those little things that pop up and keep falling on you. Got it.
Yeah, because you do have that standing seam, and you do have a few different angles there.
Right, right.
So I get it.
Right.
My only, my only comment, and I'll, I'll be alone on this if I don't make the, you know, and if I don't agree with it, but it's the contemporary look amongst the other houses there. It just personally has too many materials and angles for, for my eye, but I think I'll be four to one on the board, but I just wanted to make, make the comment of, I guess, kind of sticking out a bit amongst the peer houses on that cul-de-sac, but it's a matter of opinion.
That's also why I brought up the, the color of the sample, and if it was approved by the Architectural Review Board already.
That's the wood on the right.
Yeah.
Yes.
This is the, the front, yeah.
One of the other things in my mind, that sort of, it's, it's in, at the end of a cul-de-sac. If anyone had an issue with the, the style, it would presumably be one of the neighbors who would have the opportunity to complain about it here, seeing as no one's shown up to do so. You know, that, that, I take that as, you know, the neighbor's not really minding, or perhaps not having gotten the notice.
No, they were, they were noticed three times.
I, I, I'm sure they, I'm sure they, not having read the notice, that's different. I'm sure they got, I, I didn't mean to imply you didn't send it.
This, this application has been before the zoning board, the ARB, and now you. So there's been three public notices, so. And every time, there's been no, nobody from the public speaking for or against.
Okay.
Maybe they like it. It's fine.
Yeah.
Could I just ask a quick question? In my notes from the ARB meeting, there was, they asked about lighting along the, the pathway.
Yeah, so I am calling out for low voltage lights along the pathway. And then, you know, I have lights in the soffit here, and then I forgot to put them on the rendering, but on either side here, which is the one that I have printed out there.
And that's, that's the one that you, you gave us the, the information on?
And as well as on the side of the house, going in the doors on the And as well as on the side of the house, going in the doors on the side. On either side here.
Okay. I think the ARB suggested that you consider installing lighting along the path.
Yeah, so I did call out low voltage lights just along the path as well.
Okay, and they will be there?
Yeah, they're on the site plan.
Okay, got it. Okay, perfect. Always like when people are responsive to our ARB. It does, you know, the ARB is there for an important function, you know, most of it aesthetics, but it helps clear the underbrush for this board. So thank you.
Additional comments from the board?
I think to Mike's point, I think this is at the cul-de-sac, and the neighbors already notified. That'd be a different situation if it was on, not on a cul-de-sac in a main road within this entire neighborhood, because it does differ a little bit, but I think everybody was notified it isn't the cul-de-sac area, so.
Might be the next craze. So then I will make a motion to approve this application, 2320 65 Hickory Hill Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do you want it to be noted as a nay?
Please.
Okay.
Okay.
It's four to one?
Four to one.
Yeah.
Thank you, and Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah.
Thank you.
Happy Kwanzaa, Happy New Year, Happy everything.
Thank you, you too.
Thank you. Next application is 2336 Jiangnan Restaurant for 65 White Plains Road.
Oh, yes.
Yep.
Is this on your walking route?
Yep.
65 Hickory Hill. No, I haven't got that. I have, but, yeah, just in connection with this, yeah. So we just have two. Oh, wait, Jim.
You guys ready?
Yes.
You're up.
Good evening, my name is Paul. I'm the representative with the architect who doing the project. The architect cannot be here today.
Cannot, excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you either lift the mic closer, because you're coming through really, really?
My name is Paul Wu, and I'm representative architect who doing this project. I'm not the one who do the project, but he's not here today. And I'm also a registered architect, so I should be qualified to present in front of you for our project. So we are here for a special use permit. The reason for that is because the site we are taking over as a new restaurant, as a new business, is almost, is over, is vacant for over a year. That's why we need to present in front of you, in front of, in front of the board for a special permit. And the, I do a little research, it's a diner called Odyssey Diner, and we are taking over. And our business, I mean, our restaurant is a government upscale Chinese restaurant, and we are focused on the dining experience. And the, and the scope of work, I guess I can go over with you the.
Please.
Yes.
The plan. So let's start from the site plan. We didn't propose any changes for exterior whatsoever, so from the wall, from the siding, roofing, windows, all the same, landscape, all the same, parking, parking configuration, all the same. All we are proposing is interior renovation. Even for the interior renovation, we keep the main structure intact, which means the kitchen will be the same place, bathroom will be the same place, toilet room will be same place, dining room, equal route, all be the same. We are doing the, basically just the interior renovation type of project. So on the site plan, that's where the building is, I guess, everybody from the board should be familiar with, location of the building and the surrounding area. So that's a building, and the, all these areas, parking space, there's a 40 of them. I actually go there and count myself, there's a 40 parking space and two handicap parking space, right here and here. Focus, this drawing doesn't refer the current situation for the parking, parking configuration, but there's a 40 of them.
You said, I'm sorry, 40?
Forty parking spaces.
And two, plus two handicap spaces?
No, 40, that's including two handicaps.
Including two, okay.
Handicaps parking space. And the, there's a two-way, two-way traffic, go in here, go out here, go in here, go, and that's a easy configuration, we didn't change, we didn't change that. And the, on your right-hand side, that's the Jewish center, and across the, the whole length of parking, parking lot, this is, I think, the office building, right here. On the right is the office building. Yeah, that's for the side. And let's go over the, so this demo plan shows all we are doing, like I say, we keep most of the internal structure intact, we are just doing the interior renovation to freshen up the inside, from the wall, from the ceiling, from the floor. Oh, thank you. And that's our proposed plan. Current building, like the diner, has three dining area, here, here, and here, we keep, and here. We keep this, we keep it, but we make one changes, we carve out this large dining area in the party room. So if you have a bigger group, want to die there as a group, we can occupy this area, like a private dining space. Kitchen stay the same way it is, we are, of course, new floor, new equipment, everything's new. Two bathrooms, one for men, one for women, and I checked the plumbing call, it's totally enough for the occupancy law we are proposing. There'll be, we're proposing to have 110 customer and 15 employee. So total will be 125, and two bathroom can support that per plumbing call requirement. And then, yeah, some equipment here, some equipment here, and there's two AZ, the building, one is to the front, and one is at the back, right here. And please be noted, there's a separate entry down to the cellar, a basement area. The basement didn't occupy the whole first floor, probably occupy the half of them, probably like this area will be basement, and it's all empty, it's just, where you put the meter, electrical meter, gas meter, and there's a water heater downstairs as well, but nothing else. And we are now planning to occupy that area as the, we'll keep it as a storage.
So there's storage down there in addition?
Yeah.
Is there currently storage there?
Currently is storage, like a meter room.
Yeah.
Mechanical room, we are going to keep that.
Is there refrigeration down there as well?
No, 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 nothing down there.
Got it.
Oh, actually, there's a two refrigeration, two refrigerant equipment, we're going to remove it. We're going to get rid of it. It's not in function anymore, so.
Okay. And the party area that you suggest in the upper corner, is that going to be reserved for groups, or is it going to be used as a regular part of the restaurant as well?
Like I say, Christmas time, or any busy holiday, it will be overflow of the, of the, you know.
Got it. So it's only going to be used for regular diners in the event that the, you know, that first of all, there's no party there.
Yeah.
But secondly, in the event that you need the extra space.
Correct, correct.
Mm-hmm.
And, yeah, that's, I think that's pretty much.
So what's the overall dining capacity, including that space?
110.
110.
110 space for customers.
Got it.
Does anyone know what the diner was? Not that it matters for this application, just kind of curious.
I think it's roughly very close to that number, very close.
Okay.
Maybe 90, maybe 100, yeah, but very close to the number we are proposing.
And you said the bathrooms are single-use with that occupancy?
Yeah. Yeah, I checked the plumbing call, it's allowed, it's, it's under the requirements.
Okay.
Two restrooms for 110 people. Wow.
Well, we did.
Even for business, you would.
Yeah.
Is that what we went over with the building inspector when you came in? Because I remember we had this discussion about it.
You need, you need one toilet room for 75 men, one toilet room for 75 women, and one vanity for 200 men, and one vanity for 200 women, so it definitely can support the occupancy law we are proposing.
And is that what the diner had as well? Or are you reducing the number of toilet facilities? Is it the same number as is existing?
I didn't verify, to be honest, I didn't verify how many seating they have at the diner, but the, I just visually looked it up, and roughly, maybe not as many as we are proposing, but maybe, I would say maybe 80, 90, in that range.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, co decide for, for you as a business, and as well as also for the people community, just a suggestion, you might want to see what you could do about it, because you don't want people lining up at the door.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure. I mean, if it's, if it's become a hit, I'll be a part of it.
Okay. You can keep.
Yeah, the other page is more like a technical pages, this one shows the kitchen improvement schedule, all the equipment will be here. Other pages is ADA information.
So, obviously, the, what we're most concerned with, or most interested in, not that it's of the purview of this board, is the signage, and the name of the restaurant, and what that's going to look like. You don't have any elevations of the building?
We.
Here, in this set, right?
No, we don't, but I do take a picture of current structure, and we are not proposing any changes. The only change we do on the outside is the signage, we're going to put a new sign on the separate permit.
Where is it going to be? Can you, I guess, go to the cover sheet, is there anything there?
Yeah.
Actually, you can lower that and just pin it up there with one of the binder clips, and Gary will zoom in on it for us. That's perfect, thank you.
It's right over here. Right over here, that's where the new sign going to be.
Oh, that's right.
That's where the easy sign is.
Yeah.
Right over here.
That's where it used to be, right?
Right at the entrance.
Yeah, yeah. And we're going to keep over there, we're not going to change the location of it, but we have a new sign.
Okay.
And I don't think it's a, it's a backlit sign, no it's not, it's just a later sign with no lights. Or fabric sign, what I say.
Lucas, we still have the issue with the name of the, has that been resolved?
Right, well, first, when it comes to the signs, the sign cannot be backlit.
Yeah.
No, it's not backlit.
And just so that you're aware, the sign, we have a new sign law that takes effect on February 29th. So depending on when you submit your application, it could be the old law or the new law, depending on when you submit your application to the sign. It's a sign review committee until February 29th, then it becomes the sign review board after March 1st. So it depends on when you make your submittal.
Understand, okay, sure.
So what about the name?
Right, but with the name and the logo, we asked that, since there are more than seven of these restaurants, could you explain the, like, the ownership structure?
Yeah.
How this will be different than the other restaurants?
Although we share, this restaurant share the name, the same name of the other restaurant, but internal ownership, this is not a franchise. We particularly separate this, this building from the whole franchise, so it will be individual operated, it didn't tie to any, like, a franchise requirement. And actually, we create a special menu for this restaurant. We studied the demographic of the Eastchester, we create this particular menu only for this restaurant.
You say that the people of Eastchester have a very sophisticated palate? Yes, yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, good, that's the right answer.
Yes. So actually, we actually did that, we actually did that. And my colleague here can demonstrate that if you need more information for the menu we provide. So like I say, the whole structure of this business is not, is not franchise.
Okay, so if it's not a, is the ownership, I don't, I'm not sure what the requirements are, but if you have.
It's a different.
The same ownership, but it has, okay, so, tell me about the ownership.
She says it's a different ownership.
Okay, so, yeah. State your name.
Yeah, my name is Annie, good evening, everybody. Actually, the EC by Jiangnan is an independent restaurant. This will be the first one, and only one, in the whole of America, because the boss, the ownership, the interior design style, even the menu, logo, totally different from the Jiangnan, so it's a new one.
Okay. And tell me, you know, I know we have, we've been given notes on it, but Jiangnan, tell me why it's that important to have the name Jiangnan Chinese Fusion?
Yeah, actually, Jiangnan is an area name, it's a region name, it's not just for a restaurant or a store, because in China, in the south of the Yangtze River, the whole area, we call that Jiangnan. It covers several provinces, including Jiangsu, Zhejiang, Fujian, and Sichuan, so also Shanghai, I'm from Shanghai, Shanghai is also in this region. So our restaurant, we want to provide the food in this whole area. So it's, because for me, I really miss the food in my town, so in my, yeah, in my city, and, but in America, actually, there are not so many restaurants, Chinese restaurants, provide Jiangnan region food. We have Sichuan food, we have hot pot, we have some Beijing food, but for Jiangnan region food, not so many restaurants. And we do the research here, in East, in Eastchester, we do really have some Chinese restaurants, but consider about the surroundings, the restaurant environment, and the food they served, it's not the first class. So what we do is, we want to introduce the typical real and first class of Chinese Jiangnan region food to this area.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the Jiangnan name is something similar, like, I see a lot of restaurants that have Sichuan, and, you know, I especially like the very, the chicken with the very hot peppers on it, it's always a really good one.
Kung Pao chicken.
Yeah. Exactly. But that's, that name often denotes you get this hot spicy Sichuan food.
It's not just spicy.
From a region, yes, exactly.
Yeah, because it's combined the regions of the Jiangnan province, so it's not just spicy food.
Yeah, but Sichuan is, the Sichuan region is part one of the regions within Jiangnan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And for, like in Shanghai, we are popular for the xiaolongbao, the soup dumpling, so we also provide this, we will serve this, and Peking duck, very popular in Jiangnan area, region, so we will also have that. Actually, I have prepared documents and background.
You so disappointed me.
Ah, thank you.
You said, you disappointed me, you said I have prepared, and I thought you were going to take food out, but, but no.
Yeah, please.
No, absolutely.
Although this is educational, it's not really answering the question.
There are a lot of delicious pictures.
Okay.
I mean, I guess the question, and the question is, the name of this restaurant is the same name on the other restaurants?
What's the name?
Oh, this is a different name from the other ones.
So it's a different name.
Oh, well, what?
EC by Jiangnan, it's not Jiangnan.
Oh, it's EC by Shanghai.
Yep.
And EC representing?
Yeah.
EC by Shanghai. All right, then you answer the question. And it's entirely separate?
And no, we're not voting for Banano by Jiangnan, that's not going to work. It's the chairman's last name.
All right, was he paying attention?
Okay, he wasn't paying attention. All right.
Yeah, what we do is, we hope provide. Yeah, what we do is we hope provide more good choice for the local residents. When they have important days, like Christmas Day, like some holiday or family gathering, wedding, birthday party, they can have one more good choice. Because our restaurant, you can see the, the design of the interior. It will be very beautiful and first class. The food also very good. So really want the local residents here can enjoying the food of Jiangnan region of China.
That's kind of exciting. Does the architect do all of the restaurants? Or, or it's just you retain? Yeah, but is the design of the other restaurants also done by the same architect? Or they get regional?
Uh, yes, he also done other restaurant, this architect, yeah.
So even though it's not affiliated in a way, is this layout similar to the other restaurants or?
No, no, it's.
It's a totally different design?
No, it's totally different design, yeah.
I think the layout is probably adopting, largely adopting the existing.
Uh, sorry.
Which makes sense.
In terms of interior decoration, yeah, the style is only created for this restaurant. Or is the picture you saw?
Sorry, I was referring to the finishes, but yeah, that's.
Got it.
So we do wanna move on, but I did have one question. The menus are gonna be, are different in each restaurant?
No, it's, the menu you saw here is only for this restaurant.
Right, that's right.
The, the other, the other Jiangnan restaurant share the same menu.
Oh, they do? They all have the same menu?
They are on the franchise.
Okay, don't use that word.
The other ones.
Do you mean the, the menu of our EC, EC by Jiangnan, right? It's different from other restaurants.
Right, but the other ones are all the same? But you said the other ones use the same menu?
No, it's different.
Each one is different?
Yeah.
Actually, I, I went online, I looked at the different restaurants, and they, they actually do have different menus. Like, you could click on the different locations and view the menus, and they actually do have different menus.
Yeah, and actually, like, some very typical Chinese food, like Peking duck. Peking duck, soup dumpling, may, it, maybe it's also, you can have that in Jiangnan. But it doesn't matter with the, if the same ownership of the two restaurants because every restaurant of China, they can, they can serve that soup dumpling. It's so, so typical Chinese food.
Yes.
So, yeah, but for most of the other food in the menu, it's totally different. We serve our own food.
So the only way to actually figure this out is to go there once you open and understand what's on the menu?
Yeah. Let me explain. The, the town has, and I'm sure Rob or Lucas will correct me when I, when I'm wrong, that we, we have restrictions on franchises, you know, food for, for restaurants. And I don't know what the right questions for us to ask or to make, to, to, to give us the assurances that we need, that this is an independent operation.
Well, well, actually, I mean, it's similar to when, to the, remember the, the Kosher Bakery?
Yes.
That came in, and they changed their name. It was, they were, they were a chain of about twenty bakeries, mostly in the five boroughs. I think it was called Patisserie, but then they wanted, they wanted to name the, they were all either called Patis, and this one was gonna be called Patisserie, or was it reverse? They had a different name.
Yeah.
And, and that was okay. So, I mean, it was.
But is it largely the ownership that, that we're not talking about?
It's not necessarily the ownership. It's more, it's more than the commonality of the name and, you know, that, like, it's like, um, you know, McDonald's. They all look the same, right?
Yeah, that's right. You can walk into one and, and order the same thing for the same price.
Right, right.
And you'll be upset if they don't have the Chicken McNuggets.
Right, so, I mean, this is, it's, it's like that.
So it's, it really, that's why you were focusing on the menu and, and that, that it's not cookie cutter? You know, it's not the same thing?
No, different thing.
It's something different?
Even the ownership different.
Okay.
Yeah, we have our own boss.
For this particular establishment? For this establishment, you're saying the owner is separate from the others?
Yeah. It's separate. My, my boss, the owner of the EC by Jiangnan, his name is Li, Li Zudo, Duo. Li, last name is L I. Li Zudo, it's different from the ownership of the Jiangnan, actually.
And what is, what is your relationship to the restaurant?
I'm the representative of the Li Zudo because actually before he, he, he needed to come here, but unfortunately, the friends of his son, yeah, the, his friend's son was died in car accident three days ago.
Okay.
So he cannot come, that's the reason.
I see, okay.
You're the spokesperson?
Yeah.
All right, you're doing a good job, thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right, so let's just move on, unless you have any more questions, guys?
No.
Cool. Uh, so I make a motion, stand by, we're gonna just do a public hearing, come back to you, we'll be done. So I make a motion to open the public hearing application twenty-three thirty-six, Jiangnan Restaurant, four six five White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This doesn't need to go to zoning, right? Because they have more than enough parking.
No.
Yes, good.
I, I do find it amazing that, for a restaurant of this size, that it requires twenty-four parking spaces and some of the other stuff that we have. It's crazy. Not your concern.
They have like negative twenty-seven?
Well, it requires twenty-six, right? I think, and they have forty.
I mean, Eastchester's not alone with parking requirements being a little wacky.
Yeah, okay.
So I make a motion to close the public hearing on the application twenty-three thirty-six, Jiangnan Restaurant?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, make a motion to approve this application.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I could just make a quick statement. Um, the special permit criteria had been reviewed by staff.
It has, okay. Yeah, we just skipped over that, but nothing's really changed.
No, no, and in the staff review, they found to comply with the.
You prepared all those with the highlighting?
Yeah, that's me, yeah.
Yeah, very helpful, thank you. So then I make a motion to approve the application twenty-three thirty-six, Jiangnan Restaurant, four six five White Plains Road.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great, you guys are good to go.
You're good.
Thank you so much.
What's the plan?
Merry Christmas, happy holiday, happy new year.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Do you guys have like an opening date scheduled or sometime in twenty-four, I guess? Opening date, like, any idea?
When can we eat there?
As soon as possible because I'm really want to visit that too.
Okay, great, we'll see you there.
Thank you, hope to see you there.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. You're welcome, thank you very much. The next and last is Arch Care, twenty-three thirty-seven.
You want these packets back?
White Plains Road. Yeah, those are cool.
Go keep them, yeah.
Thank you. Just gonna go grab it right away if I can.
Yeah.
Okay, you're good. All set?
Yep.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is William Schneider, and I am with PSNS Architecture and Engineering, and I'm here today representing Arch Care, St. Cabrini Apartments. And I know this has been before you, before, for site plan approval. And we're here today informally to show you some of the changes that have happened on site due to some site conditions. With me today is Fred Munt. He is also an engineer with our company, and he is the project manager for this particular project. And so Fred will have some of the site details for you as, we'll point them out as we go up front. But I figured I'd start with some of the comments that the fire department has had and transmitted to us yesterday, thanks to, thanks to Lucas. And some of the comments are similar to what they were at the beginning of this project, and we made sure to accommodate them. One of them was whether or not the grade at the front of the entrance off of Midland would accommodate a fire apparatus as they were making the turn, and the slope would not bottom it out, just very common sense. And it will not bottom out, and we have run a simulation on that, and it will not bottom out after this project will be completed. And while we're on the subject of the entrance, a question came up on possibly keeping it more as it is, narrower. Originally, we had designed it to widen a little bit, to make the turn a little easier for the apparatus. And the question came up, maybe we could keep it the same, save a little money, and then we wouldn't be going to the county for an extra permit. If that were to come to pass, we would have to prove that the fire department could still access it without jumping over any curbs or causing a problem. At this time, we're still gonna be pursuing our original design, which made it easy. But we will have to then test it. If our client decides they want us to try to keep it as is, we'll test it to see whether or not the apparatus can make that turn comfortably.
So is, is the original design the, the, the one you're building, and that's the one with the narrow?
No, wider.
Wider, okay.
It was originally designed to be widened.
Okay, got it. So, so for now, you're not changing that?
No, we're still, we still have that.
But you're going to explore the possibility of making it narrow? Got it, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So that, that's, those were two of the items that the fire department bonded. The other one was, they wanted to make sure that the road would be twenty-six feet wide, and it will be. And the reason for that is that it will be able to accommodate an aerial apparatus of twenty-six foot wide, which they will be able to come up and set up in front of the building. And it will be twenty-six foot wide, and that's part of our original design. And the other comment was whether or not the surface of the driveway could accommodate the weight of the fire vehicle. And we did that, and we designed it accordingly. And that design has not changed. All right, so we feel that we can satisfy the concerns of the fire department in that matter. So that, that was all four of those. Then we have a few site changes. Fred, why don't you come up here? We can talk about a little bit of the site changes that had happened here, all right? And again, we'll start down here on Midland Avenue. Fred, why don't you go through and starting here and work your way back?
I gotta go in opposite order now, I guess. So the, the first change that we are proposing on site, this area right here, because of all the grade change that we're cutting through as we bring this driveway and smoothen it out, there's a lot of bedrock in this area, and as the construction team has been on site and excavating this area out for the future driveway, the bedrock has really splayed out further into our driveway area than was anticipated. So one of the items that we're looking to propose here is to actually minimize the modular block retaining wall that was being proposed along here originally. It came down all the way towards the end of the driveway here to make up grade. We're actually looking to reduce that and potentially use existing bedrock as our new wall face along the side of the driveway. It's gonna be set back about three to five feet off of the edge of driveway, so there's a little bit of separation from the vehicles coming down. And what we're planning on doing between this hearing and the January hearing is we're getting a geotechnical investigation, doing some borings into the bedrock to make sure that it's stable and can be used as, as such a function. Next item that we're looking at, I'm gonna flip all the way down here to the, to the bottom side of the building. This is, once you come down the driveway and pass the convent here. The contractor had to install a temporary retaining wall. It's made of ready, ready rock gravity block wall. It's a very common product that's used in the industry. They needed to install this temporary wall to flatten out grade in here for some of the utility improvements, particularly a utility pole with a new Con Ed service coming in overhead. And since that has been placed into effect, they've been utilizing that stable area. And the client has seen this in the field now and said, hey, you know what? It's really nice that we have this extra flat area that we could potentially use as a recreation area for our residents. So that's our second proposed item is.
Would add a couple things. When this ready rock, this is a pre-engineered wall system. You buy it from the manufacturer, and you basically assemble it according to their directions. So it's not something that we've actually gone and, you know, designed.
Take the mic.
So it's a time-tested system?
It's actually a gravity wall. It does not have GeoGrid, you know, coming back, which was holding it. It's, it's actually holding by its own weight. And as I mentioned, pre-designed system, assembled per the manufacturer's requirements.
So could you point it out? It's that wall?
It's this wall right here.
How tall is it?
It's about four, four and a half feet in height. And what we're gonna do, this, there is a transformer here, and we're also proposing to put a fence or a guardrail. Similar, that you have like on a flat roof, if you have an HVAC system within ten feet of the side of the roof, you put a railing, because anybody maintaining, maintaining it, you wouldn't want them to fall back, right? Similar to that, if anybody's here maintaining that, we want a guardrail so that they don't fall off the back.
Along top of wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, the guardrail would go the whole length of the.
It's not planned to go the whole way, I don't believe, right? Is there a fence there, though?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do a fence there, so.
Okay.
Normally, it wouldn't require a guardrail unless it was an active walking surface. And the vertical distance was more than thirty-inch drop, which this is. But for safety reasons, we can, it's proposed there, I can see it on the.
So then, in addition to those two items, the third major item that we're, we're proposing as a change on the site here is the actual, it's the hillside here that runs down to Midland Ave. Couple changes that have happened there. We actually went back in front of the building inspector back in August because based on some of the extra utility work that we had to do along this hillside, the access that was needed for it, as well as, we actually had an arborist out there who had noted that there were a handful of either diseased, dying, or invasive species trees on the site. So we had done some additional tree clearing in that area. One of the things that that's left us with is a slightly more exposed hillside. So one of the things that we are looking to do here is, again, with some of the extra bedrock that has been excavated in this area where the driveway and the detention system are going for stormwater, is actually repurposing that bedrock, crushing it up, it's nice angular stone, and using that as a slope stabilization on that hillside to help cover it and not leave it so exposed. I think that was the third major item, and then a couple other, I think, more minor items. We've been going back and forth with Veolia, the water company, for months now, and the original design was to have the water meter and backflow preventer, that type of equipment in the basement of the building. They're objecting to that, they're not granting us any type of an exemption for it, and they want us to have a hot box outside the building. So we're utilizing what is the mostly flattest area on that hillside to place a concrete pad with the hot box that's being designed by the plumbing engineer and run through the whole Veolia and DOH process. And then we've made a couple minor drainage improvements, adding a few catch basins here or there, especially in the front of the building to address a few erosion and runoff concerns that we've been seeing throughout construction.
Where were the utilities coming in from that you had to go through? Did you go through the wooded area?
So the majority of the utilities are actually coming up the hill here. There's an existing sanitary sewer. One of the things that we did as a condition of the original planning board approval before going to building permits, or during the building permit process, was we TV'd the sanitary sewer line coming out of the building. It was found to be in poor condition in a few locations with some cracks, so that's actually being replaced, part of what's, you know, coming, being done for utilities in that area. Con Ed also needed to run a new overhead wire through here, and one of their requirements was to have no trees within ten feet of either side of the new overhead utilities. And then lastly, again, with the water, the initial idea here was to use the existing services. But I think because of the demand that we're generating here, that the plumbing engineer came up with, we needed a new service and a new sprinkler system within the building. Again, that's triggering the whole hot box, so that's coming up from Midland Ave as well, from the intersection there.
So bringing those utilities in is why some of the wooded areas were deforested?
Correct, yes.
What about the rest of the slope? I mean, the rest of the slope overlooking Midland? Like, where are the trees that were removed, just in that area that you just described?
Where's Midland and where's Winter Hill?
Midland's right here, and Winter Hill runs over this way. The intersection's pretty much right here.
Yeah. And the entrances, yeah, that's part of Midland too, yeah. Yes.
So the tricky thing here with the utilities, a majority of the utility work is in this area. They needed some way of access, accessing that hillside. So what they had done was they brought their, their vehicles in down this way. That required us to have a little bit more removal in this area. And then the final area that we have is this drainage system going out. One of the conditions that we had from planning board was to mark out the trees in the field once that route was established prior to construction. And so in that area, we had also determined that there were a few additional trees that needed to be taken out. Again, one of the things that we did note when we, we had done a site walk back last year with an arborist who came through, and again, there were a lot of invasive species that were on this hillside and a lot of trees that were not in good condition either. So taking them out was actually somewhat beneficial to the project. The other thing that we've talked about with this too is that we have a very nice architectural and historic convent building, and it's kinda nice to have some view, you know, some view sheds of it from Midland Ave for the public that's down in that area.
Okay. Oh, and you mentioned that maybe you use some of the stone.
Oh, and you mentioned that maybe you used some of the stone that's been cut to put on the embankment? In what parts of the?
Correct, so right now, again, the access that was formed off of here for some of the utility work, halfway down the hill, there's actually a, we'll call it a shelf at this point, that was used to access the vehicles through there. So we would work sort of uphill from the shelf there and place the angular stone on there. We're also gonna look to bring in more smaller diameter stone to infill some of those areas so that it's well stabilized.
Could you give me some dimensions of the stoned areas, like?
Yeah, we can provide some-
Fifty feet wide or?
Yeah, we can provide some photos of the stockpiles that they have, again, it's good angular bedrock there. They've been mostly crushing it to, I would say, anywhere between a twelve inch and a twenty-four inch diameter.
I believe like a riprap slope, and you probably see some of that along the embankment, stream embankments.
Oh, so it's big? Things of that nature, it's actually called like a riprap slope. And they actually place it? Yeah.
You weren't proposing to put soil or seed it with grass, it would just remain as a rock slope?
Correct, yes.
So my concern is how, not so much the site issues, and I appreciate everything you had to do to get the utilities in and how difficult it is, and even that little terrace area, okay, I'm good with that. It's, what we're most concerned, or maybe I'm most concerned, is about what this looked like previously from Midland, and what it looks like now, and what it's gonna look like when you're done. So you've said a lot, but I'm not quite sure what it's gonna look like when you're done, I can make it up in my head, so I don't know if I'm gonna approve anything until I see what it's gonna look like. And you guys are P S S, you don't do that kind of stuff, do you? Do renderings?
No, but we can work with the team to come up with some.
I mean, we have a full architectural staff, but we're not hired as architects on this project.
Okay.
S L C E is the architect.
Yeah, I know, I know if they're gonna do it.
They do, I'm sure they are capable of doing some of the renderings, if not, then we will talk to the client and maybe-
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how you guys feel, but I need to understand what it's gonna look like when it's done before I make any judgments as to what-
Of course, and so what we can also offer to do too is, you know, I know that we have some pre, some existing condition photos from Midland Ave.
Yeah, that would be cool.
Now that the trees have been taken down as well, we did, I think there's a majority that remained down right off of the roadway there on Midland Ave. So the outermost layer of trees is still there, obviously, there's quite a bit of a slope. So, you know, you're gonna see a little bit more of the building, but we could certainly take a photo out there of what that looks like present day, and that's gonna give you a pretty good idea of what it'll look like.
I think it's also an opportunity, I think you said it, that it's a beautiful building. So it's not such a bad thing, and would there, I'm not an architect, but it seems like if you have a beautiful building, you wanna light it up a little bit, maybe?
Yes.
Just to get some uplighting on the building if to accent it, so, you know. I'll leave it up to whoever's rendering this, but it's just a thought. Because to tell you the truth, I passed by this one day, and I called up Lucas and said, what the hell is going on over there? Because everything you could see straight through, and that's, you know, that was my is, was, will be, my concern, what it looks like. I don't think, and also the whole point of using the stone, I'm really not too keen on that, but maybe I just don't understand what it will look like when it's done. So can you come up with a couple of options, or?
Yeah, absolutely, we can definitely do that.
There's more than one way to stabilize a slope as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I don't wanna play landscape designer right now or anything else, so maybe you guys can show us a few things so we know.
But it does make sense to effectively recycle the stuff that you're, you know, this way you don't have to take it off-site. And if you can use that for, repurpose it for what would be needed stabilization, that makes a lot of sense, I think, to me. I do know that, you know, I know this property reasonably well, I actually went to grammar school many years ago here, and I actually was in the convent once or twice years and years ago, and I'm a parishioner at this church, so. And I do know that there's kind of a woods in that area that sort of has grown rather randomly, you know? It's certainly not an organized forest. But certainly I can see where there'd be competing objectives, you know, to both highlight, you know, the building, but also to shield as much as possible. And I, I'm looking at a, on my phone, looking at Google Maps just to make sure I'm getting the orientation properly of the convent building, and it's, it does sort of almost sit almost at the intersection of Midland and Winter Hill.
Correct, yes.
You know, and there's a pretty big, the quarry place at Takahoe, sort of is almost oriented in the same direction. So there are going to be people who are going to have a pretty good vantage point of, you know, a viewpoint of this, and we wanna make sure it looks right. So I'm all, for what the chairman has suggested in terms of understanding this, it sounds like it's, decisions don't have to be made this moment on this, but we certainly would like to understand the process.
I think it's an opportunity to create something that's actually nicer than what was there, right, than just a wooded area, so.
Agreed, absolutely, okay.
There was just one thing, you guys led with the fire department comments, are they new, or they've always been there?
Yeah, the fire inspector emailed me yesterday, he didn't know that this was on the agenda. He just said, oh, I saw that they're doing work there, I just wanna check these four things. And he emailed me, and I said, oh, it's your lucky day, they're appearing before the planning board tomorrow, so I'll just ask them these questions right now.
Is there something they're changing that he said?
No, no, he just, these are just questions he'd had in his mind.
Previous?
Yeah, yeah.
But he never commented on it previously?
He just kept forgetting. But then he, no, he had commented previously, but he wanted to bring them up to me, and he just said, you know, I was driving by there today, and I just had these questions. And I said, oh, well, this is perfect timing, because, you know-
They're back.
Yeah, so it worked out that way.
But you're going to have to comply with those requirements anyhow.
Right, right, but it's a good time to ask, yeah.
Yeah, and there's never been any intention not to, yeah, so.
Very cognizant of required requirements.
Yeah, I would think it's not something you-
Just this real quick, so are you asking for like a landscaping plan? Is that something you're able to provide?
Yeah, absolutely, I think it was that, and then some type of a rendering or elevation.
From the street, I think, right, from down on Midland.
Yeah, we'll work with the team to put that together.
Maybe it's different perspectives, I don't know what it's gonna take to convince us that what you're doing looks good, but whatever it takes.
Okay.
Well, there have been trees removed already, right, so, you know.
Correct, yes.
So our options are, you know, we should do something to make it probably look less, I don't know if it looks bare, I don't know if that's the appropriate word for it, but it certainly isn't as thick a wall of trees as there was before. So that, you know, the question becomes, do you just change, you know, you remove more trees and put something else there? Do you replant, I mean, but with native species that are gonna look great? But even then, how do you replant in a sort of a haphazard woods? So I think these are all questions, you know, we wanna make it look as good as possible, it's, it does have, there is an opportunity here, and let's see if we can't help do it right.
I'm sure right now it'd be a lot more bare than it is in the summertime.
Yes.
That's something to consider.
Yeah, it's not a doubt about that.
But I guess it always probably has been this time of year, so.
And so to that point, with what we create, you'll see the worst-case scenario, the bare scenario.
Right.
It'll give you a good idea of, you know, what that'll look like in the winter months.
Yeah.
And know that there will be a slight improvement naturally over the rest of the year.
The worst-case scenario, yeah.
But also keep in mind with any replanting, it'll-
Takes a while. Yeah, yes, I know.
Can you see that wall from the street? I mean, it's not a very big wall, the block wall.
I would say if you look, you can see it.
You really gotta search for it.
Yeah.
Because I was gonna ask about the aesthetics of that wall, it sounds like a pretty plain vanilla wall, do I need to be concerned, or?
We can, yeah. We'll put out photos, it's, it's, they look a lot like large stones, but very square.
But you said it's only like four feet, right?
Yeah, it's only about four feet, but it's better than a typical concrete wall, it almost has like a self-cladding to it.
It'll be in your rendering, so we'll see it there.
Yes.
Okay, cool. All right, we don't need to belabor this anymore, gents, any other questions, or?
Could I just ask a procedural question? How long do you think it would take to get those landscape plans or renderings in? Just because I have to time the referral to the county planning board, and they are allowed up to thirty days to review, oftentimes they take less. But, I mean, ideally, we would want to give the county planning board whatever we could at the time of the referral and get their comments back in time for the next meeting, which is January twenty-fifth.
I definitely think we'd wanna reconvene with the team, and especially talking to S L C E, seeing what they can do rendering-wise and how we can pitch in on that. So if it's okay, I'd like to contact them tomorrow and get back to you with an answer tomorrow.
Let me know, I mean, we do have some flexibility, part of it is, I worked for the county planning board for twenty-two years, so I could ask them to review it a little quicker, perhaps, no guarantees, but it would be good to have a complete package to send to them first.
Absolutely.
And then get their comments in time for the next planning board meeting here.
Of course, okay.
Oh, so this motion to refer to the county, you wanna hold on that until we have something to send them?
I mean, you could just motion to send it to them once I receive it, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
Just to get on record that we-
Yeah, yeah, get on record, and then as soon as I get it, I'll refer it.
And then the timing is whatever it ends up being.
Thirty days from the day they receive it, which will be immediate when I send it, because I'll send it by email.
No, I mean, best case, they show up in January and everything's in place, if not, it just rolls into the next.
Yeah, it would roll one month later, but-
Do you guys have a completion date for the project, or you wouldn't know about the building?
Yeah.
Well, the building's actually moving along pretty well on the interior. It's some of the utility hookups, especially the water, again, because we've been going with Veolia for so long now, and they, you know, we finally got to a point where we said, you know, we have to just cut our losses and go with this hot box outside. We, it was a losing battle to try to fight them on going inside, so we're still a ways away. We've gotta get their sign off and then go through the health department at the county. So I think a lot of the, and all of the final pavement work is obviously not happening until the spring at this point anyway. So there's still some time, but I know they wanna get the site set up as much as they possibly can for that final work.
When they plan on doing C O Os and everything, is it in twenty-four or is it in twenty-five?
For this project, I mean?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, yeah.
They should be targeting twenty-four.
You think, right?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Interesting project, thank you. So then, there's, this is not a public area.
No, January twenty-fifth will be the public hearing for this, yeah, it's gonna be two meetings. So they'll come back in January twenty-fifth, but then they'll notice for the public hearing and-
But don't we have, do we have an open public hearing from previous, or they have never?
No, it was approved, it's closed, yeah, so this is a new application.
Gotcha, okay, cool, I understand. So then I'll just make the motion to direct, wow, this is a tough one. So for this, I make a motion to direct staff, that's you, Lucas, to refer application twenty-three dash thirty-seven Arch Care to six-five White Plains Road, to the Westchester County Planning Board and the Village of Takahoe for review and comment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Cool. Think you're good, thank you for presenting it to us.
All right, thank you very much, Sheldon.
We'll see you in a month and a half.
Just have a nice holiday, Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, or Happy New Year.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was very good at explaining, I wanted to ask more questions about the cooking. I think you said it, when can we go there?
Trying to translate it.
That's all he wants to know.
When can we go eat?
Those soup dumplings are-
So we, we're done here, right?
Yes, we can close this.
I don't know if anyone, because I got here a little bit late, did wanna mention that I believe tonight is Anthony's last meeting on this board. Last planning board meeting. Anthony, I guess, was elected to the town, the town board, and will begin that service in January, is that correct?
January, correct, yes, it was my last planning board meeting, it's been a pleasure serving with all you.
I wanted to thank you for that service, I think it's been a couple of years now, right?
Two years.
Yeah, and it's been a pleasure, and you will be missed. You have a near-perfect attendance record, which is very appreciated, and it's just been a pleasure serving with you. Best of luck, it's good to know we have a friend, not that we, not that the other members of the town board are not friends, but we have one of our own. Thank you very much.
Ah, thank you, everybody, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you for your service and comments to the board. Now, when we flip through the channel, when we see the town board, we want you to flip it over, we'll stay on and listen to it.
Thank you.
Plug our show when you're there. Towny board.
So then, I guess we're done, right? So thank you, everyone, I make a motion to adjourn the December seventh, twenty-twenty-three planning board meeting. The next meeting will be January twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
I'll say yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year. Happy Hanukkah, happy holidays. All the best.
Thank you.